Second.
Second.
Okay, we are now probably moved on to recess. We will now discuss. For some reason, we just talked to her less than a week ago where she was going to be here, so I don't know what happened. So, we'll just instead just do a formal conversation. We are on guardrail number three, and it's the financial one. So, James had an idea. And we just need to expand on that a little bit, I think.
Yeah, we hit something without board approval. That's true, because the only little things I wrote down was...
Without board approval.
And also doesn't operate outside...
Outside of balanced.
Outside of, yeah. We said outside of the budget.
Yeah.
So, we could say...
You want every budget to be balanced?
Well, we just said, I guess, I just put down budget because now it's operating without...
Well, maybe we should take without and say outside of balanced.
I know what you mean. Sometimes balance, balance means that you're, in my mind, I guess anyways, well, I always have, to me, a balanced budget was that my expenses and everything had to be exactly to the right, and that doesn't happen. You know, we can't say balanced. But I know what you mean. It was approved and outs, and then we did talk about something about outside.
Outside of the approved budget?
We did, we just...
It's kind of early. We are out of recess. We can't get hold of her. So, we decided we're just going to talk a little bit about budget number, some of this, so we can not waste their time here. So, Vanessa has the floor.
We're talking about the guardrail being something to the effect of the superintendent shall not operate outside the approved budget.
Okay. The only question would be, so, the last two years, we have gotten just slammed with a pair of subs because of serious injuries to both pairs. So, we go outside the budget on that. There is not much you can do other than...
Right, but could have just, well, at that time, just come back and then just, we have a meeting and say, we give permission to go outside of the budget.
Shall not operate outside that approved budget without board permission.
Okay, so we'll just have a motion to approve the pairs, though.
Yeah, yeah, well, you have to, because I realize it. Yeah, we had to this year and so...
Or like, yes, if you, it, it's, like, on certain things, like, I'd get it, you know, but like, you know, what if diesel ends up being higher than we thought? It's like, does he have to, do we have to call a meeting to say, yes, you can continue to purchase diesel for the school? Like, it gets a little, you know, like, or what if our insurance premiums are high for the year? You know what I mean? It's like, on some of those line items, they can be things that are completely out of your control. Like, if it's like discretionary spending, that, you know, that's all like choice-based, like, then I understand it, you know? But I mean, like, it's just, I don't know how we'd separate it out, but you know what I mean? Like, I don't want to be called a meeting every three days just so we can say, yes, you can, you know, you can buy gear.
I know what you mean, because that was a good example, because I think from what I can see from the expense report, insurance was even more than we estimated.
Yeah, it was this year. So, I just, I don't know, like, I know, like, I know where you're coming from, like, and I get that, but I just think of, like, some of those line items, it's just like, it gets to be a little piddly, I think, like, when it's...
Right, I know what you mean, when it's something like fuel that...
Or like, sometimes, like, I don't, because like you said, too, like, we had a couple of those sections in our budget where tech, our technical payroll is below budget, but our subs are way above, but it's just because, like, you know, circumstances outside of our control.
Right, but you should be able to see the writing on the wall and do that at a regular board meeting.
And that, too, I mean, like, you know, if you foresee something going out of budget, you know, we could always, like, address it, you know, well before.
True, if it would be something like, like, fuel or something, if we're getting close, then we can say something. But yeah, if it's something that all of a sudden, like, we need another two pairs and it's going to make this much of a difference or something.
So, let's go back to the practice that I advocated for that I got a little bit pushed back on, is we wait to pay the bills until the board has approved bills, because the bills you approve have all of those things, those buddy numbers, those line items, all that on there, so when you actually approve it, all that writing is on there of the budget. But we're paying the bills before the board actually approves the bu, that, so then...
The only thing that's hard is that sometimes you get a bill and they're only doing the three meets, and if we wait a month, they're going to be behind.
Well, that's what I mean, that's a...
We have to have more meetings than to do it that way.
Yeah, so you want to run to a two meeting a month schedule? A lot of districts do do that. But it's, my wife would not like that. So, I guess, I, I, I want, I just want to make sure you think through, because you are approving that through the bills, and it has every single line item, and the overages, and it has everything written on there.
Except not. I mean, and that's, to me, anytime it goes outside of the budget, it should minimally be pointed out.
Sue just sent a text, Wade and I got it, says she didn't receive the meeting, like, I know you've got it all.
Well, the one thing I've thought about is what we used to do, which we haven't been doing, that I would like to do again, is that, like, kind of what you did last regular meeting, Zane, right, kind of went through everything, is briefly do that every monthly meeting we have. You know, I, I know that that was, we had done that for like my first year, it's just, and it can be very brief, but just touching on some of the highlights, it's like, hey, like...
We wouldn't have to do every single...
Because we had that, like, whatever Excel spreadsheet, and had, you know, percentage of budget or whatever, and we went, we just went through it briefly every meeting. I remember that in my first year, and it's...
I know what you mean, you could do it, but just not have to do every single section, maybe just if he thinks, if he thinks there's something that's really close, then he can say, well...
And that's what I'm saying, you don't have to go through the entire thing every month, but it's like, if you see something that's looking fishy, maybe...
Or getting to be, yeah, using up most of the budget.
That's the one I'm trying to navigate.
Yeah, and a lot of it, like I said, too, like, when you gave the reasonings, it's like, oh, we have, we've been using a lot of subs. It's like, well, okay, well, that's...
Right.
So, then, then that's just a, like, if it's kind of just a regular item on the agenda, then that's kind of a surefire, like, it's always kind of being...
Right.
Your pulse, you're on the pulse of it all.
That would help, I mean, and then that way, we would know a little bit ahead of time. You know, if we can see, okay, if we're already up to 90% or 95% of the fuel oil, then at that time, we can say, yeah, it's okay.
But part of it, too, I mean, like, we get that every month anyway, so, I mean, like, it is kind of on us, too, a little bit, but I just, I think it'd be nice, because a lot of times, in a pack of two, like, I mean, there's just, there is a lot in there, so it, like, might be helpful, like, even if it was five minutes, just like, you know, Zane, you have the floor, anything you would like to point out, feel free, or even if we're looking good, so, yeah, it looks so far so good, but, you know...
Do you want business manager's report?
Yeah, or just maybe like a...
I mean, that's pretty common in districts.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't do that.
I didn't like that. Just put it on as a part of the budget at every meeting.
Along with the superintendent, because there's holes except, but his, he will actually talk, you know, but we'll make him talk.
To bring up whatever, to bring up whatever issues.
For even a public, like, what's, you know, they have a rating of what we've covered, I think that's what they try to organize them.
Right, then that would be one that we would, you know...
What's it, that's five, 10 minutes?
So, why don't we...
So, back to our wording.
Yeah.
Did you put just knowledge in there, too, like, board approval and knowledge, or something like that? Knowledge of what's going on?
Yeah.
Superintendent shall not operate without board approved.
Outside...
Outside of...
Outside of board approved.
Budget.
Budget.
Budget without board approval and knowledge.
Can you write that up for you?
Yeah, she sent me the same email, I just...
Well, my thing is, like, I wonder, why would she just notice that it's not 35 minutes? Why would she?
Because you just got a...
Yeah, why would she text us at 8:00?
It's, you know, it got down until, like, I thought this was kind of funny, I have to give the Texans some grabs, I mean, you know, I check the weather, meteorology background, I check the weather every day all over the country, and so they changed wind chill advisory to cold advisory, and then wind chill warnings to extreme cold warning, and, you know, North Dakota last week, we had it all over, but this low came down, and down even in the Texas Panhandle, down by Brownsville, they had extreme cold warnings. So, I always, whenever I see that in Florida, and...
Outside of...
Oh, sorry.
They were like...
Superintendent should not operate outside of the approved budget without board approval?
Outside of the board-approved budget with...
Outside the approved budget without board approval.
Yeah, kind of seems like a funny sentence.
Well, just take board-approved budget, say-approved budget, you know, that's kind of indicative, and then you say without board approval and knowledge, because we're the only ones that approved the budget, so who else would approve it?
Yeah.
Operate outside of...
Yeah, outside of the approved budget without board approval and knowledge.
Yeah, down there, they had wind chills of down to 37 above, and they had extreme cold warnings.
They were complaining on Wednesday because it was four inches of snow in 28.
But I get it, I know they're not used to it, and their homes aren't built for it, and in Florida, I mean, my God, some of them had even inches of snow.
So, my, Paul's cousin lives, or winters down in Corpus Christi, and he said these cold snaps that are happening are devastating the oranges and stuff.
Well, it's not the fruit, I mean, I thought, oh, man, we're going to be paying for that now.
Because it keeps killing the trees, and it takes a hot minute for him to come back.
Oh, I bet.
Yeah.
I can about imagine all kinds of food's going to be going up about like eggs here for soon.
Chameleons technically, or whatever they are, or some sort of lizard or something, but in Florida, they give them that, because they're cold-blooded creatures, so when cold snaps like this happen, they fall out of the trees.
Then lay there until they warm up.
Yeah, yeah, but they, they get so cold that they stiff up, so they start falling out of trees and falling out, so...
That'd be cool to see.
It's like, wow.
Oh, that's fine. I want some paper towel.
Could have been a doctor.
I think there's some paper towel underneath this sheet of paper there that, if you need some, use it, wipe it on your pants.
If you wipe, use his hand.
There.
Is that something right?
Yeah, that's what we said, without board, yeah. Yeah, without board approval and knowledge.
Have we read that? Okay, are we having a fourth term?
I had written down quality staff under number four. Did you write anything?
Yeah, I have that as well, because we had...
We had one, we just had one?
So, we had each picked three, and we had two that we both picked, and then one that each picked, so figured we'd probably do the four.
Was it like third one?
Yep.
Yeah, first one, yeah. Superintendent should not operate in the district without supporting academic and non-academic needs and issued decisions or student center. Number two, the superintendent shall not operate with assistant employee, shall not operate without assistant employee, validate all employees or professional workplace expectations. Does that sound right? That's what I had written down.
Yeah, I had something.
And then, maybe this one here, the third guardrail, and the fourth one, we want to deal with staff.
Because we had student center, we had, this was the expectations, we did the, here's the finance one, and then we had a...
Got those pictures.
Yeah, quality, quality staff was one, teacher-driven assessment, we had a few of these odd little ones here, conservatism, but would that be probably under, could that be under this here budget one?
Yeah.
Well, that was, that was typically for curriculum.
Oh, conservatism was?
Yeah.
So, she's texting you, obviously texting you?
Yeah, I just, I said, I sent it, and then she said, did you use this email address? I said, I reset it, just trying to say that it's working.
I mean, you two have been back and forth a lot, so I think you would have the right, you know?
Here's the scale.
On top of the topic for the better next quarter meeting, I want to talk about curriculum.
Want to teach it?
Like, maybe. I think it's one of the biggest problems we have, it should be a required class, take philosophy in graduate.
Oh, I thought you were...
Not even joking.
I thought you were going to talk about finance.
Well, that, too, I think so many people don't know, like, how to...
Have you talked to Kelly about it?
No, I haven't, but I...
No, you should do that, that's what I...
This is the first starting point.
The study of how to think, like, the use of logic. You see so many people nowadays, like, when they argue or debate, they, they're using logical fallacy left and right, they're not even arguing the same thing.
Morning.
That's okay, sometimes the technology doesn't always work the way we want it to. You turned up now.
She's all the way up.
We, we were just, actually, when we were waiting here, what we did is we, because we were working on the financial responsibility one when we, when we signed off, and we kind of come up with something now, so we can, we can read it to you if you want.
I hope that would be fabulous.
What we come up with is the superintendent shall not operate outside of the approved budget without board approval and knowledge.
That sounds excellent.
Good for us.
Let's talk a minute, one of the criteria on, one of the criteria on guardrail progress measures is they need to be updateable multiple times a year, so that means, you know, minimum of two. Some districts, you know, are looking at those guardrails, you know, four times a year, but it's a minimum of two. And I love financial guardrails, but I, they also come with a challenge, so let's talk a minute about what it might look like if you approve a budget once a year. What are some touch points you could have in an additional time during the year? The superintendent's the one who actually sets the guardrail progress measures, but I still think sometimes it's helpful to, to be talking about them when you're setting the guardrails themselves. So, let's just, you know, throw us ideas on what that would look like, did you, at least twice a year, to know that the superintendent is not, you say expenditures, any expenditures outside of board approval budget?
Well, we were just talking about that, maybe having, like, the business manager kind of give a little financial, you know, I know we get an expenditure report ourselves every month, but like I said, sometimes to read through all of it, if we have him just do a little five-minute kind of update of this to say, for example, one thing we talked about is fuel oil. We could all of a sudden say, he could one month say, well, we're kind of getting up there about 85, 90%, we, you know, we got to start watching this, we might have to go over or whatever. If we have a report, it kind of every month from the business manager, just kind of tells what, you know, sometimes we'd have a longer one, but just every month, a little bit, just to let us know if there's certain areas that are getting close, could happen something?
So, I think that's an excellent idea from, from a perspective of, because what I'm hearing in that is every month, we're getting this information, some form of financial information, but let's give it some context towards, towards this value of wanting to make sure that it stays inside our approved budgets. And an observation I've had with a lot of boards, like, we talk about money, we're responsible for this many stores of the public's tax dollars, right? How do we demonstrate that we're being good stores? And what I'm hearing is an example that we could be good stores is monitor this, this, our money in a little more structured way that, that has, has this measurement tool of, is it inside or outside of our, our approved budget? Am I hearing that correctly?
You're right.
Yeah. I think that can be a really fascinating idea to do, to do with this. Other thoughts from board members?
Yeah, we all agree we talked about it.
Yeah.
What might be another, so that would, one way could be your business manager and how they do the reporting, what are some other ways, if you don't have to have more than one guardrail progress measure, but what other ways would you, might know that your superintendent is staying within the approved budget?
But, I mean, in his weekly update, I guess, he could, you know, discuss red flags or, you know, issues, whatever.
And weekly update, discuss issue. So, your, so your guardrails themselves are not written in that smart format, unlike your goals, so it's not, the percentage of this will go from here to here by here, but your guardrail progress measures are, so the way that that business manager report could be is the percentage of monthly expenditures that... I don't like, what does it say? Will not decline. What this is going to require, what that kind of a progress measure will require first is for your superintendent to go back and look at what percentage of monthly expenditures have been going over when you've approved, or start with the baseline that's blank as he starts to monitor this each month. And so, one way it could be, and again, this is the guardrail progress measure, that the superintendent would have the percentage of it, because I'm getting to the weekly thing with this example, the percentage of, like I said, I don't like it when they, or do not decrease, but they're, it's still allowable, the percentage of expenditures that exceed the allotted budget in that area will not decrease, will not increase from zero, that'll be how you could write it. So, it will go from 0% to 0% over that five years. So, what might that look like on a weekly basis? Right? And if you're already asking your superintendent to do that on a monthly basis...
I guess I was just thinking, my personal was that, he does a weekly update to us to some certain things, that maybe there's something new or something, whatever, going on in the district. If there was something that he noticed that, oh, I just found out that, you know, this is, we're going to get this bill for, the freezer broke, and we have to buy a new freezer for $20,000 or something like that, that he could, that would be the good time to find out about it instead of waiting till just the month and month, I don't know, whatever you have to say.
That's, yeah.
You know, that's kind of the thing that people are looking for, is something that, if there's something unexpected, large, to let us know on the weekly things, otherwise we don't need to have on his weekly report if things are going normal. I mean, we'll get that from the business manager then.
Or something like, you know, we have this staff member who's been sick, and we had to hire an extra sub, and this is going to, you know, add to our already...
Right, right, yeah.
So, it could look like the percentage of unanticipator, unplanned...
Yeah.
Unplanned, unbudgeted, and these would be for you, Robbie, or superintendent, like, when you're doing your, your progress measures, but it could look like a percentage of unbudgeted expenditures that are reported to the board at the time they are incurred. Will go from 0% or, um, I'll work that out with Robbie, because you don't, you're not wanting to increase this, you're wanting to keep it at zero. So, we'll go, or you're not wanting to keep this one at zero, you're wanting, in this case, you're wanting him to report on a, but you don't want to increase, have a target that's an increase of unexpected expenses, right? What you want to ensure is he's reporting that to you, but I think there's a way we can measure this, we'll noodle on it a little bit more, but what I think is important on a finance guardrail is to have this conversation about what that will look like to you, so when the superintendent brings this, brings this guardrail progress measure back for your approval, there was already some sort of pre-calibration around what that would look like to you, to know that your superintendent's doing this, and I think that there, we've identified a couple of ways. Any other thoughts about that? How will you know? And could you restate for me, collect the exact language of that guardrail?
Sure. The superintendent shall not operate outside of the approved budget without board approval and knowledge.
Okay, so, the approval would be what's been brought to you by your business, by your business manager report, and the knowledge would be the, when he does his weekly update to you, you know, if there's anything that was unplanned or unbudgeted, those would be done, and those would be, would those be sufficient to you to know, or there are other, you know, we can think about, you know, was there a time when there was a surprise or a challenge, and, and wanting to avoid in the future? Would those, you elaborate and, and ways of monitoring, they'll avoid that situation again in the future?
Right, yeah, because to me, the knowledge would be on a weekly thing, Dr. Lucas would say, oh, we did, we had a staff member that is going to be ill or out for a month, and so you're going to have to have, you know, added expensive subs, and then, yes, then when we get to the regular monthly meeting, that's when the business manager would say, just, you know, letting you know that as of now, you know, our sub category is, you know, at 90% or something like that, and so that we would know that we would be able to approve to say, we have to let it go over budget because we have to have it, so, yeah.
Do you will, yeah, I mean, so you approve a budget June every year?
Uh, it's like July or August or something, yeah.
What is it, do you approve a budget, right?
Yeah, once a year.
Okay, so once a year, you're approving a budget. Do you guys get regular budget, like, if there is a change, do you do budget amendments? Or you just approve an expense?
We just approve expenses. If we would actually have to, like, for example, if all of a sudden, we have to approve that we're going over on the sub lines, the category, we don't buy a lot, and would have to amend the budget, then at that time, we would do that, but otherwise...
We'd have to probably, if there was a formal motion, we'd probably have to refile with the county.
Right, we'd have to refile with the county, but otherwise, we just...
Yeah, I think all we're, all we're getting at here is just like, again, we just want to be in the loop of it, and then kind of be like, oh, this item is looking to be over for, maybe it's, like you said, fuel oil, maybe something out of, outside of our control, we just want to know it and say, yep, that sounds good, or, you know, just to make sure we're on top of it, and we know what's, what, we're just, that's kind of what we're getting at.
Yeah, we might not always have to amend it. Yeah, we might not always have to amend the budget, it's like, but if we know that particular line is going to go over, they have our approval, we don't have a choice if we have to have subs, or if we have to, fuel oil, you know, if one boiler, the coal boiler goes out and we have to use fuel oil, we, we know we have to do it, so... to do it, so...